Yeah.
Yeah, Brian did. Did some training or took some training, one or the other. I think they gave some training. Yeah.
Uh, no. Everybody vote today?
Yep.
Yep.
I was the first voter.
Was you?
Yeah.
I was forty-six.
Oh, really?
I was forty-seven.
Oh, that's good because there was only thirteen and I thought, oh my god. And that was like eleven o'clock.
It's not, it's not very high percentage for us. What we got with seven, oh, seven hundred something.
That was around six, seven hundred. Well, I don't know anymore.
How many people, people we have who do the cleaning?
The census, three ten or six sixty-one?
Six sixty-one.
And hooks.
Sorry.
How you all?
I was the fall.
Yeah.
Give ten bucks and call a hundred people. And the first bunch that come off.
Some, some places pay your wages for the day. A lot of them don't do that.
No, 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 that's up at felony court. I'm at the baby court. Yes. See, I get sleepy. I don't have to hear me keep things. Well, I do, but not, not as a he.
Baby court.
Yes.
That's where you prefer to be, huh? I don't blame you. I wouldn't want to have to make some of those decisions.
Don't want to hear it.
I'm not very much, I'm not seeing it, so don't worry. You're gonna have to listen to me today. At least not too much anyways.
They didn't have enough mustard, that's what it was. Enough mustard, right?
Maybe you should put mustard on the worm and throw it in.
Did you try that?
No, I didn't try it.
I was gonna try that later in the year. I'm trying to have a little hammer.
But it was, it was the powder mustard, right? Right?
Powder mustard, right? Yeah.
It was water.
Right, your name.
Signatures. I was reading Sanitaceans. Signatures.
Is that the tables where family could put their name on it or something like Rob was farming?
Take the dog to the back porch. They're all the same place, mine is. In the flat, flat, not my thing.
So you work more down here?
Oh, yeah. Isn't that what they make in the bombs out there?
I haven't been making any.
So what'd she want then?
Actually, it's pretty simple.
Well, they tell you how to make them.
It's pretty easy. It actually is pretty, this is pretty easy to do.
Yeah. All or nothing.
Yeah, I mean, we spent so much money on trying to make.
Oh, golly, you got a beautiful.
Start with the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Scott?
Yes.
Joyce? Yeah. Stan?
Here.
Steve?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? We need approval for the minutes. If anybody had a chance to read those. Oh, wait. First one will be for the April first meeting. Anybody got any questions on that? Need any discussion or? If not, we're going to just need a motion. Please for the April first meeting.
Scott?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Sam?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay, the next one will be for the April point second, special conference meeting.
I'll make the motion and approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Bill?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is that an actual report?
Yeah, I was looking at the bank deposit utilization and it looks like we got a million four hundred nineteen thousand. One million four hundred twenty thousand, four ninety-one, fifty in aggregated accounts. So I guess I'm pretty good shape right now and all the funds as far as I can see are very well balanced. So I think we're all looking good shape.
Or take these hands off and go back. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Scott and you, Steve?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Public comment? Anybody need to direct control?
Yeah, it's just, I was down here last, not last month, I missed a meeting last month. Do with my water bill.
Would you state your name?
Rosemary Diamond. He said, do with my water bill. And he's charging me three thousand gallons when his subtraction is wrong. And he said it would work over, it would work it out. Well, I've been using a thousand each month and I watch my water bill and I, when he comes ready to, before he reads it, I put it down. But you can see where his subtraction is wrong on my reading in the first of the month of January. It's in black and white.
Yeah, how much is it off?
Well, three thousand, I mean.
Three thousand gallons or?
Yes, off a thousand gallons.
Off a thousand gallons.
Mm-hmm. And I came down, I talked to him about it and he says you better gonna change it.
Who, who's he?
Yes, I came down here. Yes, you did.
No, Carolyn told me that you were down here. I never spoke with you.
I'm not gonna argue. Because she said over the phone he would not compensate me for the, that it would work it out over the months.
Because we estimated in February. I don't do subtraction. All we do is other than the readings, the computer does it all.
Well, if the reading, you can see it right here. The reading is off. Even the mistake of your computer is off.
Rosemary, are you saying that you read your meter the day before or the day that it was read by?
In January, they didn't read it.
I see, estimated.
Oh, I see.
But it should, it should have balanced back out when in February, the next bill.
I got my bill from February, March.
Maybe look into and see what, what the issue is. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
It's the subtraction. Does it say three thousand every month? Is that what? No. That one was three thousand, but the.
The subtraction's not incorrect. This says one thousand one hundred and ten and this says one thousand one hundred and thirteen. Then that says three thousand gallons used. How is that subtraction?
Well, one. I put the big amount up there under the ten. Can't subtract, uh. I'll show you what I did. Can't. Got a pencil? That's how I got it.
All right, that's three thousand.
Three from one is two.
There's no, there's a zero under the three, man.
Well, I didn't use three thousand in January. That's what I'm saying. I did not use three thousand. I've been using a thousand each month. And I don't see how I can use in January, the first of the year, three thousand gallons. Because I can go clear back and look at my other stuff.
And we can go clear back and look in the computer too, but the.
But I'm just saying.
The meter doesn't lie. I mean, I, I, I can't explain to you why you use three thousand gallons of water. I have no idea.
Because I didn't even have company. That's what I'm saying. Unless you put a new meter in.
I don't know.
Because I can't, I'm only one person. I know it goes up to two thousand, but I never go up to three thousand. Only in the summertime. It had to water my flowers.
Rosemary, is that your February bill you're looking at?
This is January. I got February, March and April.
What did March and April show?
A thousand, a thousand, and a thousand, and three thousand in January.
So I'm thinking, it's not always the case, but sometimes I'll leak. But if it went back to a thousand, apparently that's not the case.
No, I don't, I turn my, sometimes when I go away, I turn everything off. So there's no leak. I've been home, there is no leak.
Yeah, I'm not saying there was.
Well, was it in December?
I'd have to go home and look at my thing.
I mean, I think what we do is let's get the data, look for data to figure out what's going on. I'm not, I don't know whether to look at the meter.
I can't, I can't explain to you how you use water, just like you can't explain to me how I use water. I have no idea.
But I'm just saying, I don't.
All I know is the meter doesn't lie, but if you want to contest the meter.
Well, then I get it.
Then we can send it out at your expense and get it tested.
Why should I have to pay for it?
You're disputing a meter.
But are we talking about a month that it was estimated and not actually read?
Right.
So, how often does that happen? Do we estimate it just about?
In the winter time?
Every February.
Oh, the weather? Okay.
That was in January. February was actual.
What is it, seven dollars a thousand gallons or?
Something like that, isn't it? It's just. Eight dollars and some change.
For a thousand gallons.
I guess we ask to get the data from December and look everything back there out what's going on, I guess.
I mean, I can look it up, but I don't want to look it up.
Yeah, right.
But I just can't believe I'm using three thousand just for one person. If I had company, I could see it. I know when I have company, how it's gonna jump up. But when it's only one person, I can't see three thousand.
So is it just that one month?
Yeah. Because I keep mine all.
So if you're thinking you used a thousand and the system's saying you use three thousand, it's about seventeen bucks.
Right.
That work in question.
I mean, that's under, the issue comes down to that's why you have meters and stuff. We're trying to figure out why. You know, if there's an issue, then we have to figure out the issue as well.
I, I, I never, the remotes on the outsides of the houses sometimes will run slow. Never seen one run fast. Chances are, if I come and look at your meter, it probably says a higher number than what the remote on the outside says.
They're pretty close. Because that one year when Linda was mayor, you guys said, you came down, I said, no, I said, I use three thousand because I did water my flowers that one year when it was real hot and it was three thousand gallons. But I haven't been watering my flowers in the summertime because I ain't paying a high price of water.
I guess we have to investigate if it's from here.
So how much does a new meter cost?
Hundred and sixty dollars.
In addition to, like Scott says, us reviewing it, if it came to a seventeen dollars, is what you'd like reimbursed? I'm just thinking.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just wondering why it jumps up to three thousand in January when it's the coldest month of the.
Right.
I mean, we can't answer that. We don't know.
You know, I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, it could be stuck to whatever. It happens. I mean, you just don't know. We don't know. I mean, we don't know why. But I mean, if it's, it's back to the stable again, it's not, the meter must be consistent. So something happened. I mean, we just don't know what happened.
Okay, say a hundred and sixty, then you put it in, then I have to pay for your labor too?
John, what month was estimated on that bill?
February.
February, so January's was the actual bill?
Yeah. Yeah, the only bill you got that was estimated would have been the one that come out March first. Since, or February before.
I guess we get the bills to get it now. During normal business hours, they can try to figure out what happened. I mean, within them, we have to figure out what our options are. The bottom line is, you've got a meter, nobody else is here measuring. The meter measures what it measures, so.
And then do they have a meter for sewage? And how do you figure the sewage for the?
It's based off your water usage.
Okay. So, I'll get back with you about that. So, yeah, because I can't understand why I'm, you know, one month in January, it was the coldest month of the month and I haven't charged three thousand, you know. Okay. Thank you.
John Puffin, I'm here to talk about the alley between three ten and three oh eight from State Street. I was wondering what it would take to get that released.
The way, the way I understand, John, tell me if I'm wrong on that. John? You know, they're about the alley at, at the Prophet's there. Did you tell me or am I, in the alley that's there, we can't vacate it because it's got, we have to give an access, access to?
Council had decided before that they weren't gonna vacate alleys anymore.
Yeah, but didn't you say that the reason they couldn't do that one was because there was electric lines or electric poles or something in there?
It's got easements.
It's got an easement on it.
Well, I called AEP and they said there's no easement.
I mean, the power plant, there could be easements or the power.
Well, the only reason I'm trying to do it is because I'm trying to get rid of that extra sewer tap that's just sitting out over there by the tree. Another property there and I'm getting charged more sewer tap. So I was just trying to call the county auditor to see what I can do to roll all three pieces of property into one. And I called them in AEP just to see if they were being problematic. She said as long as I'm a boardie and they have access to it all the time. That, that was my only concern. Because Patty had asked, it was harder for me. Roll the properties into one, then we can get rid of that second tap. Well, how can we do that if there's an alley?
And then what's on the other side? The alley isn't picking up for a lot either, is it? That they, didn't they say?
I tore down like a forty foot trailer.
Well, I mean, being Japan, they have a trailer there anymore. You know, yeah. Now, why don't we discuss that? Can we just big piece that sewer tap?
No, because you get.
That's where the issue comes down to. I mean, that's, that's kind of how you structure.
And what, and what he's asking for is to vacate the alley and make it one property all at once.
And I think that's, that's the thing, he was always cautious about because when you start doing that, I mean, I mean, right now, it works out right now, but what happens is that you kind of get yourself in a situation at the county, the community does grow again, then you got, okay, now you got to shut down all your alleys and your right of ways. Right, so have to be careful we do all that stuff because I mean.
See, that's not, that's an alley that has.
But he's rolling a lot of property that's never gonna be used.
The problem is, it comes to, if you.
It's like being for the dead horse.
Utility sewer or something like that, because that's, that's, we're in property. I mean, I mean, right now, we don't see that we're gonna do that, but the problem, but what, if you vacate it, then in the future, if you have future growth or something, and you try to do something, then you, once you start down that path, pretty soon you start getting yourself in a situation where you can't give the services to the people. So I mean, have to be careful. I mean, I don't understand.
So what should I do about my second tap?
There's nothing on that second tap, no pro, no building, no dollar.
It used to be a trailer.
Right now, it's empty. How is that different than Strop's situation where?
Because it was tied together.
They tied, he tied both properties.
They all tied the same vertical room, which is what I was trying to do.
Yeah.
So that was, that was a challenge, so.
He can't do that with the alley.
Right.
That's two different separate properties.
Let me ask this question. As you would know, I haven't looked into, on our zoning laws, would we, would anybody be legally allowed to build on that property, a dwelling?
Probably not, big enough square footage now.
They're not gonna allow a trailer onto it.
Man, that's true.
So there's no potential to actually use that tap ever again. So that's, that's where I'm hung upon it.
Yeah.
I mean, if you can't use the tap, you know, and there's no chance ever, I mean, I could see if you can go back and put another dwelling back on it and say, okay, now we need the tap. But if there's absolutely no chance with our zoning, then the tap shouldn't be there. Well, just because you can't put a dwelling on there, doesn't mean you can't put a building or a bathroom. Well, I'm, I'm asking, is there any way to use the tap? Is there any way the legally firm in our zoning laws, for him to exercise his rights to use that tap? Or is he just gotta pay for it because it happens to be there? That's my question.
I don't think I got a good answer for that right now. I'll go back and review them. I got, I have to research it just so I know for sure what I can do. I mean, I, I think that there's a square footage issue we're gonna have with another building there. The problem was, the, the trailer store was there, it was manfitted, it was only when it placed last because it was manfitted, but now they're not going.
Trailer was.
The trailer was there.
There's not a square footage anymore, bro.
Yeah, one end was sitting on the U banks line and the other end was on the alley. So it was like, it was actually sitting on two different lines. It was sitting on the alley and sitting on the U banks. Yeah, before the zoning, it was, you had to sit there, it was actually in the U banks.
Then you have to do some research, run it back to council.
Just so you know, the process would be, it would be, you would have it surveyed, make sure there are no easements on it. And if that were the case with the survey, then I could draw up a quick clean deed if it were vacated. But obviously, I, you know, the political issues of access and, and also the, the concern whether or not there's an easement issue also.
Yeah, because I don't mind, I don't mind.
But at least you know, at least you know the process. Is there anybody else adjoining this? Is yours the only property on both sides? All around it?
I don't know. Well, on the.
Because we don't want to upset other people.
Bringing in ten U banks on the far end over by, what's his name?
But you're the only one that joins the alley in question.
Oh, the alley on, on both sides.
Do you think Sarah Paul's also?
I'm not for of.
When it comes to alley on both sides.
Because, I, I just not. I mean, that's something we sit down and say, let's not abandon alleys anymore. I think it's a wise decision because you don't know what the future's gonna hold.
Right.
I'm just saying that the, the idea of a, of a sewer tap is for, commonly for residential use. And if you can never build on that and use it for residential use, then we have to make the process and make the right decision.
Along with what Rob's saying, setting the abandonment of the alley aside for a second, couldn't council simply make a motion to vacate or release his sewer bill until if and when something is built on that property? And if nothing's ever built, why is he paying fifty dollars a month for nothing?
I think if we do that, you kind of hold the floodgates and you don't.
Empty property.
I'm not saying we can never do that, but I think we need to talk through that a little bit and give it a little bit of thought.
It's a stress.
Are there other properties that are banned?
Yes. Your, your rates were based off the amount of taps that were put in the ground.
So their taps aren't being used.
You start, you start eliminating them and then everybody's bill's gonna go up.
But what if that tap was never used in January?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. We've got.
Because I was wondering, because we're down the town.
Yeah, but the tap was put in. So we'll just have to kind of look at it and practice it and understand, I guess, how we're gonna handle that. I mean, I understand your position. Yeah, I know, it's a lot of money. We understand that. But on the same token, it's, it's that catch twenty-two because you, you try to solve one problem and then you create another problem. So we got to check your dollar to find a balance there. So we have to look at the only issues.
You're gonna have to look at the zoning, uh, to come up there. We'll have to talk through it.
Yeah, talk through it and check your.
Well, let Scott do the research on, well, let Scott research it and so forth, what the zoning, what the zoning laws are and so forth. And then you can bring it back to council and then we can make a decision.
I think the other thing is, just so you understand, you understand why we don't want to abandon alleys because that's the problem. We've, we've got to be careful because.
I kind of do, but I kind of don't. So I want to use the alley. Because if you go one direction, you run into, um, Howard's house. You can't turn. I mean, literally, you couldn't turn without going to this living room.
But you, you know, you, you can't just look at what the moment is right now. You have to kind of step back, look what might happen in the future. We don't know what's, what's gonna happen to the property.
I understand.
I mean, you know, say, say something happens to the property.
But isn't, isn't that always an easement for loans? Because there's phone books and there's utilities, so that's always an easement.
Well, that's what I'm saying is, we thought it was an easement for, for any house.
You would be in an alley because it's legally always an easement area. I mean, you can never build there.
Yeah, but see, the problem is, I, I don't think, I don't think the village wants to give up assets. I'm just saying, I mean, these are things that were part of the village originally. And you got to be careful because once you start giving all that, doesn't matter if it's property, whatever, then it, it just gives you less flexibility as far as what you're doing in the future. I think that's, I think that's how, we're looking at it right now because I know we, we had an issue where we tried to abandon alley down the other end of town and it traded a big, a big hassle. We decided that we don't want to go through that again. It just becomes, it gets all the neighbors pissed off. Because if it helps one person, then everybody else gets frustrated, you know, because then they don't have access or something, you know, I mean, that's, that's what you got to be very careful of. It's not that they're using it for access all the time, but as soon as they, you say they can't use it anymore, then, then it becomes an issue. You know what I'm saying?
Well, legally, I can't because there's utility there. Our front front.
So I can't believe it's not an easement here because I thought there were decent in all those alleyways.
Well, I thought it was too, but I don't, I can't.
We can't, we don't, we don't.
That's where we got to search.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. So we, you know, maybe, or maybe it wasn't dotted, like they should have done or something too. I don't know. That's possible. Yeah, so we don't know, you know, we can't totally understand what happened in the past. We got to kind of look where we're at right now and figure out what we can do, so. I think I'll look at the zoning stuff and I'll try to figure out, you know.
I guess what we're saying, we can't make the decision tonight, but we will research it for you. And if there's a way to do it.
It's kind of, I guess you can see my point. It's kind of hard to look over there every month. We spend all that time working on our garbage up and it's like, okay, now I'm in a fifty dollar money pit, but just kind of.
No, we understand.
I don't want to build anything there just for that simple reason that I like it clean and open. I don't want.
So let me look at, I'll look at, how the zoning rules are structured, not, not the John Austin. We just try to figure out. So let me look at, I'll, I'll look at, how the zoning rules are structured and all, I'll try to find out, so we just try to figure out. You know, what those, that information, I'll bring that to council, and we'll try to present it, and we'll try to figure out, you know, maybe we'll provide a balance there, so I'm not sure what the issue is right now, so. So I don't have a super memorizing.
So it changed from a couple of years ago to now, there was some law change or something?
Well, I just, I think there was some restructuring and reformalizing, so we decided to look at, look at the wording.
Because three years ago, I came to the council, they said if I dig it up and get a tap of it all, then it can go away. But I just didn't have time to get to it, so.
I don't remember what it's saying, but.
Yeah, I was in a meeting with people, I remember that, you, well, everybody, yeah.
I have to go back.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, we, we looked at.
I don't remember what I was saying.
I went, went a minute and see what's, you know, I, I can't.
We're not saying yes, we're just not saying no.
Yeah. Let me look into it and I'll try to figure out, you know, when we look, look at the records, see what we set it back then to, make sure that we stay consistent, so.
What kind of presidents we said we'd do something like that.
But you know, John's right, I mean, gotta be careful.
Well, I can see.
John's right, that's, that's.
We don't want people going now, but if you physically can't put another building there excluding a barn with a pole in it.
Yeah.
But you can't build another house there.
Right. Yeah, I understand your opinion.
What's the point? I can't sell it.
Because the issue, the issue comes down to, we're, well, you have your property right now, but what happens if you decide to sell your property and somebody else buys it? And then they, we've vacated the, the tap, and they decided they want to make their house yearly now, and maybe get the whole thing or something, I mean, I don't know, I'm just saying, there's some things that happen that can change the, you know, the outlook, so we gotta be very careful here.
All right.
Appreciate it. Okay, thanks a lot.
Have a little.
You too. Thanks for coming. Okay, I don't look like there's no other. Fair reinforcement committee, finance budget audit, stat?
Nothing really new to report other than, so we, everything's well.
We got money.
We got money, you know, and I guess we're, not doing any stupid tests, that's a good sign, so right now we're, we're speaking.
Anybody have any questions for that? From that, we'll move on to police, Brandon?
Uh, slow month. I think I had a lot to do with the weather and whatnot, I think it's gonna be slow this summer, um, due to six days that are being closed and then, you know, we spoke about, uh, twelve are gonna be paved, so I think all summer, I think a lot of stats and stuff are gonna be down, but I think a lot of our other incidents may be down as well because of the traffic, lack of traffic, so. Uh, can be a good thing, can be a bad thing, so we'll work with it and work through it. Um, there was only one citation for this month. Two warnings, one juvenile complaint, thirteen adult complaints. So the complaints from last month, there was only one complaint last month, and we jumped up to thirteen now. Uh, I think a lot of that has to do with our new computer system. We never had a computer system in the office. Brian Hesch from the sheriff's office has gracefully came over and gave us a computer system in our office now. So now every time that someone calls either to make a complaint or something like that, the complaint is pulled, so we will now have a record of everything that is done. Prior to that, maybe.
Maybe.
Um, only, only usually if there was charges would we have any kind of record of any kind of complaint. So now we will have a record, even if it was a found dog, we're gonna know that on this date, this person's dog was found, it was returned, we'll have then a record looking back, um, for liability issues for every issue we think of, so. That is one huge thing, I think that's a lot of the reason why our complaints have went up. Also, with nicer, nicer weather, I think our complaints are probably gonna go up, up substantially from last year and in prior months. Um, policy is completed, if anybody needs any bedside reading material?
Wow.
It is pretty all encompassing, uh, like I said, I didn't reinvent the wheel, I took, uh, Tiffin and Foster's policies, kind of picked out the things that fit us, uh, downsized considerably, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, but it does have everything from, uh, vehicle pursuits to arrest procedures, and it, and it kind of has the guidelines, um, of more like an SPO, an operating procedure that they can look through and say, this is the way it should be done. Um, and I think that's very important, especially with the younger officers and stuff that we all have. Um, so that's done, and I, I ask you guys to, um, kind of.
Well, I can approve it.
Approve it or adopt it, um, and if you want to read it, you're more than welcome to. Again, it's, it's.
Is there anything about healthcare in there?
No, no.
That's on the website.
You gotta pass, you gotta pass that before you know what's in it.
Um, so if anybody wants to look at it, again, it's pretty all encompassing, um, again, it was adopted by Tiffin and, uh, Foster's policies together, so it's approved by them, so you kind of know that you're kind of covering our bases without trying to reinvent the wheel. Um, the only bad thing we had this month was we did receive a leads bill, uh, leads is how we run license plates and records and, and things like that. And we got a bill that apparently the leads, um, was not paid for three years for some reason. I don't know if, if there was, from my understanding of speaking to the sheriff and whatnot, it's not anything that the village itself did, um, maybe the prior administration over at the police department, um, but I think in years prior to this three-year negligent bill, we paid our money to the sheriff's office, and now we pay it to leads. So I don't know if there was something that fell through the cracks where they thought they had paid the sheriff's office, and then when the sheriff's office didn't ask for the money, they just thought it just was now free or what, but we did take care of that, unfortunately, that was a big hit, so.
How much was that?
Sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. So.
I thought you were gonna say sixteen thousand.
No, I mean, it's still, with, with the budget and whatnot, it, it is a big hit to our, the police department's budget, so.
Is it so much a month, or is this so much a year, or what?
You pay yearly, uh, you can't pay monthly or pay yearly, it's the same, about six hundred dollars a year. And that's basically the money that we pay for the Sunday County Sheriff's Office to run our leads, to give our printouts and things like that. Also, um, we are supposed to pay an extra fifty dollars a month for the in-car computer, but the county has provided us with that through the grants, uh, that got us the computer and things like that. So, uh, that's one good thing.
An old legal agency tells us.
Yeah, so I, I don't know why it was not brought up sooner.
Well, you guys have a checkbook you can pay, or do we have to pay?
It's paid through.
Well, Angela pays.
But I don't think she ever got, I don't, she never got a bill.
She never got a bill, yeah.
The bill came either through fax or through the mail, for whatever reason.
Never happened here.
It never happened, so I, I don't, I'm assuming it never got to her because she's on me like.
So I can't, I can't believe in like, three years of not paying and not somebody raising hell about something, though. You know, I mean.
And, and I think that's kind of an issue that leads probably should have said, listen, you're, they would tell the sheriff's office, hey, don't run their stuff anymore, then we probably would have known sooner.
Yeah.
It didn't happen like that, I'm sure, they're a big agency, they do everyone in the state, so. It's taken care of now.
Huh?
Yeah, we can do that.
So I just want to make you guys aware, it's taken care of.
I agree.
We tried everything we could, I even wrote him a letter asking if we could pay last year.
Forgiveness.
They said, yeah, they said, we appreciate you trying to do that, but you can go pay us the full amount. I tried to get us out of some of it, but it didn't happen.
Oh, no.
Thanks for asking. Um.
See, when the bill, when we get the mail, we just give them the mail.
Right.
So they give us the bills back.
And I don't know that it ever came in the mail, um, I, it seems like it came through fax because.
It came here on fax.
This time it came to, to here.
Larry wanted.
So maybe, maybe we ought to make sure we get a procedure in place to, how we handle that or something, so we have some.
Can we pay it ahead?
Well, I don't know, that's.
We're paid through July now.
But I'm just saying, maybe what we should do is just have some, get some procedure together so that somehow that on it goes back to.
I, I sense everything that kind of comes in that's a monthly thing, I kind of make myself a note, hey, every month I need to make sure to do this, 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 so. Um, I've had it to my list as long as I'm here, I can guarantee it won't be an issue again, so.
And I appreciate that, but I, I gotta go along with what Scott's saying.
Okay.
In, in today's age, there should be no reason why that shouldn't award you, I mean.
And we can probably even add that to our.
Or flag it or something, say, do something.
I don't know if it could be added to down here somewhere so that we know per year.
We probably ought to.
It's kind of software we use for, I'm not sure, just.
Whatever.
UAN. UAN.
Yeah, it's UAN.
It's a state thing, so.
So.
There's probably somebody to put a flag on it or something so we get in the right eventually, just to keep it paid so we're not getting out of trouble. And is there, is there any other issues like that after phone that you know that we might?
Not that I know of, no.
That we have to pay.
And again, I don't think it's anything she did, I don't think it's anything, you know, that was done intentionally, I think it was kind of a mix-up when it came from paying the county to paying leads, so. But it's taken care of, so. Melissa's gonna be going to training, Ohio Tactical Officers Association Training, this is something she signed up prior to me even getting here, um, but since it's already been approved by prior administration, she is gonna go, um, it's at no cost to us, she's taking her days to do that. Includes seminars, workshops, uh, vendors, it is a three-day thing. So she'll kind of bring back some, lots of freebies, information and whatnot, and all those products that we can't afford, so.
When's she go with that?
I think it's May sixteenth to the nineteenth. Um, the only other thing is she did go to pipeline training, um, and she did that on her own, uh, but she brought back the freebies and the knowledge to us and the pamphlets and the discs, so I can review that. Just went through response, evacuation thing, and she was able to gain some contacts in case we ever had any kind of issues with that, so. That's all I have.
Brandon, the book you mentioned there, is that typically always in the police department office?
Yes. If anybody would like to look at it, they can stop in and.
I guess, do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, we need to make a motion approved.
Do we have, uh, new help yet?
We have only had three people apply, um, and the people who've applied, I've kind of went through and I, and I've spoke with John, I've spoke with Gary about, um, our needs for coverage, and, and I think we've developed that we need more evenings and, and weekends more than anything. And the people that have applied so far have not been available to work those.
The only one to work ain't the former.
And, and that will be changing as well, um, the schedule, I'm not gonna tell you they're not gonna be days, but it's gonna be very sporadic, um, to keep people on their toes and to cover the hours that so far seem to be important to you guys and the people that I've talked to, so.
So do we have electronic copy of this?
I do not yet, but I can get electronic copy.
I think we should just do, I think we need to do that, and that would file in our system so we have it so we.
The only thing I don't, I don't ask that they're taken out of here.
Right.
Due to.
I agree.
Run hands, but if anybody wants to look at it, it's more than.
I think we just need to get electronic copy of it and then to get it in our system so we have a backup in case something happens. Because that's what we're trying to do with the zoning and stuff, we're just trying to get some of that stuff, so at least, at least if there is changes, it's easier to change, and plus we do have some kind of a trail where the information's at.
Well, I'll bring it up then next month, and I'll bring the electronic copy, and, and if you guys want to throw out before the next meeting, if you guys want to come check it out, uh, so you're not saying, yeah, I adopted, have no idea what this.
How, how would you plan to make an electronic copy of it?
Um, I would, I made this through Adobe Pro, um, so everything that was done was done on the computer, and it can be saved in a PDF format and put on a digital, so it can't be changed or altered.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
Okay.
Okay, so we want to go ahead and do a motion now, you think, and get this so it's active?
Well, yeah, I agree, we can get it.
So I'll make a motion to.
L E A D S, all caps. It's like law enforcement automated data system.
We'd still like to review it.
Well, I think we have to review it, we can electronic copy and review it, but I just, I just.
We need to have it sold in the four dollar.
So it's enforced so that we have the procedures in place, so.
But I'm sure it's gonna be alright.
It's still gonna be changed, it's, it's living document, but the, the point is we need to get it before so that he can use it as a tool when he's organization, so, I mean, you know, a damn work wants to get, use a damn thing.
And the big thing is, once the new people, once they apply, um, start, I'd like to go to say, here, here are the things that you need, here's your initial issue of, of uniforms and, and things, and here's a copy of your policy, so it's not, well, you started, but you screw something up, but I have, we have no recourse because.
Right, yeah.
Why didn't know, there was no policy, so we need to give that all to them the day that they start.
I agree.
So are you, you'd like to have a motion made to adopt this?
I will.
They did.
Joyce would be the first one? Who's second?
Scott.
Joyce, yeah, Scott?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes. Brandon, did you just say that, um, item that you would give to a new hire is already done?
Yeah, this is.
Oh, that?
This is the policy.
They're gonna get.
They're gonna get a digital copy.
Yeah.
This is the one that will be over here, but I, I'd like to go to hand it to them, first thing.
So they got to, they pull up information.
From day one, correct.
What is the procedure to do this thing?
They got something to work with, yeah.
I've also been creating a lot of cheat sheets and things that, so you're not looking through, uh, the Ohio revise code or whatnot, you, the ones that you use regularly.
Those I'd like to see throughout the council.
Let's have the cheat sheets.
Yeah, a little summary of what we're approving, so.
Yeah, we saw it, an idea.
Right, that's all, yeah.
I can, I will, I will make, uh, like an index type thing and break it down to kind of generic what it includes.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we want, so.
Kind of like a stuff note or something.
Yeah.
I will do that.
Because most of that stuff is meeting does anyhow.
Right.
No, no, but it's just, you know, it's an idea.
Absolutely. That's all I have.
Cool, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
If there's no questions, I gotta go to Foster's council. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Fire, Steve?
Okay, there were twelve calls for the month, nearly total is forty-one calls. Congratulations to CJ Smalley and Brandon Eubank for passing your firefighter one class. Uh, the department is still, oops, how did I get this? The department still needs an update hybrid flow test to send to ISO so we can finish the evaluation for insurance class rating. And the department is working to replace all the fire hose that is older than nineteen eighty-seven, this is a new NFPA standard. And after having a department meeting, we are in the process of updating some SOPs. And last but least, the need to appropriate those extra levy funds to the budget for the purchase of the new jaws of light. The balance shows over five thousand dollars, not including this year's, we would like to see five thousand dollars be approved for this purchase. The association has asked for donations to help cover the rest of the cost.
Well, I guess my concern was, I thought when we, we, we started this whole process, like the fire truck and all that stuff, and that was, we, we, we probably spent all the money we had for the last, next four years, I thought, extra money.
That was, uh, was the thought.
Yeah, the thought process, and I asked, that's what the issue is, I mean, I don't think we've got a lot of extra money to throw to fire department, that's my concern, for me.
I, I thought myself it was coming up through a different process, you know, whether they were hurting the money to get that, I wasn't sure how that was gonna be funded. So whatever's first.
First thought, I think that isn't what it's saying there, right?
No, that's not what it's saying now.
Yeah, and that's my concern.
So is it all paid for except for the five thousand dollars, or, or what?
No.
The way I understood it was quite a bit of it was a donation, and then the association was gonna pay for some, and I, I didn't, this is the first I've heard about that.
Yeah.
Wasn't in the neighborhood of twenty thousand?
Was it like?
Seventeen, seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to have somebody here from the fire department with that.
Yeah. Yeah. And see, that, you know, I, I think that's part of the frustration with the council is that, you know, we've kind of worked with the fire department, but there, there's never any representation whatsoever, you know.
And they, and they won't back us on anything we want to do anyway, you know, he's his own little island out there all by himself and doesn't want, you know.
Well, it's counterproductive for him.
It is, it is, yeah.
It's not that we don't want to help.
He wants something from us, so it, it, you would think that it'd be his responsibility or on him to come to us and explain.
Why?
You want it.
Right.
Him or maybe Mike.
Because it's gonna be frustrating to him when we sell it.
Yeah, and tell him that. When you, when you say, if he asks you about the council and that, say, council wants somebody there.
Presentation.
Presentation or what?
You're wanting money, you've got to sell it.
Yeah, you gotta sell it.
You're the one, you're the one asking.
I mean, it's, it's not that we haven't given money, I mean, the, the big picture is that we, we give them a lot of money for this.
Give them a lot of.
Money for this fire truck, you know, and we said that upfront, and said, you know, once you make this commitment, the next four years, I mean, you don't really have a lot of extra money for anything else.
In that room, so that understood that, I remember the night he did.
You know, and, and we ever, what, two down, two years on the road, and now we've got this.
And then another problem.
We suspected that that was gonna happen.
Yeah.
We, I mean, we talked about it.
I mean, I mean, we're just trying to be balanced here.
But people weren't there.
Think the problem I have is we spent, what, sixteen thousand dollars because the bathroom wasn't good enough for any, anybody, okay? So, they couldn't have parties, or they couldn't have dinners, or they couldn't have this or that.
Yeah.
So, we spent all this money, fixed this nice little bathroom and all this kind of stuff, I don't think there's been one party here yet, was there? One dinner?
No.
One anything?
Open house, maybe?
Yeah, open houses.
I think they had open houses.
I mean, I could go off, open houses, but, I mean, it's not that we don't wanna support the fire department, but we're just trying to find a balance, or I mean, I mean, we'd like to have some engagement, I guess, is what my, you know, my feelings are, I mean, I think we wanna support the thing, it could be the right thing, but, I mean, we, we had you discussing when we went down to the fire truck thing, and that's my concern, is that we spend this money, and we know this is gonna come through heads sooner or later. Yeah. And there would, there would be another need, that they needed something else in the future, and the problem is, we only have so much money coming in from the fire. You know, levy and stuff like that, you don't have a lot of money to throw out there, so.
And he, and he still has it, and he's had, he wants another truck, you know, I mean, it's just a constant, you know.
Well, we're talking about.
They'll have to sell this.
Yeah, we're talking about a levy.
And, yeah, and tell, and tell him that.
Something like that.
Some of it is invested.
Chief or assistant chief.
Yeah.
Not, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and we realize he works nights, but he could have some, he could have Mike.
Yeah, Mike would be available.
Well, yeah, I know, I should say.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, the, the point, the point being is, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a sizable amount of money, I mean, then, you know, that's the, that's the biggest thing, and, and, I mean, we just like to have a little re- representation, we're not gonna say no yet, but I'm just saying, we'd like to understand.
Right.
Why, and then, you know, what, what their, their game plan was for planning the whole thing or whatever, I mean, there's gotta be some kind of a.
You can bring up to him about the four years he had, if we give him more for the fire truck.
Yeah.
And thus, we're always cautious, four years is a long time.
And then, he's only halfway there now, he wants more money.
Yeah.
It really hard to look back crystal ball four years down the road, and you know what the department's saying. I thought he was gonna end up being a year short on that levy.
Well, I thought, I, I thought we had your.
I thought it was gonna be split, he had to get it, he had to get the levy passed again, and like, I don't think.
It, it might be, I don't know, I'm not sure what the timing was, but I know there's like four-year window there for the payment, right? So, I'm, I'm just cautious, cause it's, you know, it's, it's easy to throw money away, and it's just like, you know, the vulnerability.
You don't know where that levy's going.
Right.
That could go south on us, and we're sitting there all in the back.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I, I knew where you're getting, I just wanted.
Yeah, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
You know.
This levy, is this the fall, the fall levy?
Yeah.
This fire.
Yeah, but I don't, is it due this year?
Yes.
Or next year?
Cause I thought from the way I read.
It would be for the fall, it's a renewal.
Right, no, it's right.
I didn't know if it was wrapped up with the school one, the, the way I was reading.
No, 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 no.
Not in school.
No, not in school.
This is fire levy.
Fire levy.
Well, I know that, but I thought they were simultaneous, you know, that they were all gonna be voted on together.
Well, then the other concern you gotta have too is what, you know, we got two more years down, but what are the township's gonna do in two years as far as Liberty and Jackson too? You know, they might, they might change their strategy as far as how they do fire coverage too, so that could be another impact that we could get in trouble with them too, right? So, we gotta be cautious here, if we get in trouble, you know, it could be. We wanna be accommodating, but we also gotta be realistic too, you know? And that's my, I guess my position for right now, too, unless you can sell me on it.
Okay, well, you take care of it.
Why don't you talk to me?
No.
I'll have him talk to you.
Yeah.
After he gets in.
It's a little subtle, it's right off the bat, yeah, okay, bye.
It'll be blood, that's your blood.
Okay, that it for fire then?
Yes.
Okay, clean up, Georgie?
Uh, I always, I sent one letter and they've started on it already, so I'm real excited about that.
Okay, what's in the town? Andrews County?
No, no.
By the Legion?
No. Oh, yeah, we gotta get ahold of him, we're gonna get ahold of him.
Yeah, it's racing up a lot. I don't know, if you have to steal something, I don't know, maybe.
Does he live in Republic or someplace? And I don't have to think of.
I have a question for you.
I think he lives in America.
When houses are being repossessed or whatever, no one's living in them, who's in charge of mowing them? You know, let's say the bank.
The bank, both.
Yeah, if the bank don't do it, and then, we do it and charge them a hundred dollars each time.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think we did that, or this while back, and we do it, I guess we did.
So, each time we mow it, it costs them a hundred bucks, so we have to send them the bill.
I mean, it's making to do.
That's a lot beside, uh, what's his face's lot down there, again, the guy from Gibsonburg? On Deal Street.
Oh, that, he don't own that no more.
Oh, who?
He's owned, uh, it down the corner with Steve's neighbor.
Oh, oh, I get to talk to him.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure what's going on with the one behind me. The guy, I think, just moved out of it.
I think he lost it too, didn't he?
He could have, I'm not sure, but I know it's getting up there.
You're, you're talking about your mom and dad's old place?
Is that for sure?
No, that one, they're cleaning, they're cleaning that home.
Huh? The Wilkinson property?
Yeah.
That's for sale by a realtor now, so the bank will be taking care of it.
Which, which one is that one?
It's the Wilkinson property.
Well.
It's like, um.
Yeah, they went through the last few days.
Yeah, and then there were White House, JP Morgan Chase has got it, it's listed at forty thousand, thirty-nine nine.
What's on down, towards Linda's place, you mean, yes?
The one, a couple houses down from it though, McCann House, down last year.
Oh, look, did he lose his too?
I don't know, I just wonder what's.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
He lives in Rising Sun.
Oh, does he? Holy cow.
They won't last long, they'll get gobbled up.
I don't see people gobbling properties up in this town.
When they're that cheap.
Well, you have to buy for ten thousand.
That place, Mary's house, one hundred and seven thousand.
Yeah.
Really?
Well, one cost me, one for sixteen.
Mary's, that, that's not even half, that's only a price for eighteen thousand. We had to, we had to.
What the hell's up?
So, that property just not go up.
Joyce, if there's a property that, that maybe I would think needs one of your letters, do I just say something?
Yeah, just call me, yeah.
You're gonna have her send me a letter, or.
I'm on mine tomorrow.
I get really upset when people don't mow their grass.
Okay, so you're, well, you're just getting out and about now too, there's just some more, like, does that know?
Okay, well, we do know.
Okay. Okay, Water sewer street, John?
Uh, the electrical panels have been ordered for the, well, uh, sewer. A representative from IFM came in and, and measured a clarifier and everything to, uh, get those pumps installed. And the street started mowing this week. And, I think that's about it.
So, you think you gotta, you gotta, timing, timing on getting the VFPs and stuff installed, is that one thought you'd think realistically, or?
He didn't tell me.
Okay.
John, do you happen to know who's got the contract with the state to pave twelve, right in Betsville?
No.
Is it M and B, or you, you go?
State, state, state does it all, we don't do nothing.
It could be M and B, or the state has a.
Where we're getting, over the state.
Whoever the state hires now.
Might be able to find it on their website.
I was just wondering, I was just thinking, if you could wave a magic wand, at the same time that's done, what the chances would be if we could kindly ask somebody if they could pave from, on Union Street, from Sullivan to the Marathon, especially right beside the Marathon. It'd be a perfect time, that whole area, widen it maybe a little, or whatever, right there by the Marathon.
It's a thirty thousand dollar section of asphalt.
And I know any cheap.
Kindly ask me.
Well, I know, I know any cheap, but with all the, all the trucks that MGQ has gone through there, maybe they give us a, a break or.
They haven't so far.
Yeah.
We tried to get them to when we did the section from your place.
Yeah. I was just wondering if it's worth two or three people going out and.
I miss, you know, I, I guess.
Having coffee with them or something.
We had them do the, the temporary repair on the road, and as they pop right up there, then it's still downright or something, right? Did they do some, did they do some, right? I guess my question is, we're not gonna be responsible for getting that repaired again before the state paves it, right?
They would say.
What's that?
No.
You know, well, we did the temporary repair on State Street, you know, all that's popped up.
That's not what we just did this last.
No, it's not?
No, that's for the sewer project ten years ago.
Okay, so that's.
We did lateral across.
The lateral's over, that's okay.
Do you have to do the potholes before they pave it?
That's not our road.
No.
I thought, I thought you said that, they said you guys have to do it in town.
We had to do the trenches because they weren't putting enough of the top coat on to fill in our trenches.
Yeah.
I'm where the ones that cut the road.
We'd like them to grind it out with an eight-inch mill.
No.
Park, April?
I just gave you guys like a dates to remember, basically review, seeing what we talked about. I gave you guys a list, I think John knows most of the stuff we've done at the park, but, um, there's a couple things that I feel are like safety hazards that we should probably try to think about getting done before. I mean, I just, I see lawsuits, you know, happen, for people tripping and falling and scratching and something, you know? Different things that of course, you know, they want sand and dirt and stone, and Brittany keeps saying that the drag for the ball field is broke, do you know anything about that, John?
I don't even have your.
I just, I just, yeah, so.
You got one more, Chris?
I don't know, she said a couple times, she brought it up to you that the drag was broke, do you know anything about that?
No, she said it was stuck in the fence, and John walked over and took it off.
Took it off, and took it off the fence.
Okay, she just.
Did it need welding or something, or?
I don't know, but she'd be the one to contact, I have her phone number, if you know something, maybe you could.
I got her phone, I got her phone number.
You got it?
Yeah.
And then I guess the bottom there, we just needed like, I don't know, we need your approval for swim classes, um, Chris Valley Joe was interested in helping us do like a kickball softball tournament type thing in June. Um, I haven't talked to Chris yet, I told Brittany and James to handle that one, cause I don't know anything about like that sports and stuff. Christmas in July, we were gonna have, um, and Jim Graham was supposed to send something here from Jumpers Wild, is that coming to mail today, no? It was a contract, I told him he had to send it to us by today, so you guys could approve it, so that we could have, um.
This is the first thing I'm gonna do.
Oh. Which is John Dean. That is, um, if you guys wanted to have the bounce houses out at the park.
How much is it roughly?
Saturday, it's, um, should be two twenty-five, delivery fee, two fifty-six, thirty-one total. He told me that, um, they sell, how was that, Gary, was it? Ten dollars, six tickets for ten dollars, three for five, or one for two, or something like that. Said most families will buy like the ten dollar, you know, thing, if you've got a couple kids, they'll jump. So, you know, you figured we'd have to have like twenty-five of those ten dollar things that sold. So, it'd be up to you guys, I don't know if that day will warrant enough for that many people, it's kind of a gamble, I mean, what's the weather gonna be like, are we gonna have enough? I know Trish is planning on having, um, kid activities out there that day, and I know that Lisa has, I think, fifteen vendors, that was the last thing I seen out there that day.
We got the big pantry party.
What's that?
Pantry front, Lisa.
Yeah, yeah, um. Uh, we can't get Jumpers Wild for the Fourth of July, cause we lost them, they're gone.
April, do you know, is all the insurance follow on him and?
Yes, and we have, from my understanding at the last meeting, they have all of Jumpers Wild's stuff, cause they previously did, um, for us, so I think we have like their insurance, I don't think he needs to send like the updates, but, um, from my understanding, last time it was managed.
This is the guy out of Tiffin?
Jim Graham, Jumpers Wild.
Okay, what the insurance company told me was is, it's our liability to have him, to have us operate this stuff. If he was operating it, then it's his liability.
This day, he can operate it, on May twenty.
He can?
He can, or for Memorial Day, he can operate it.
Which, it wasn't an issue either way, we just needed a copy of that contract to send to the insurance agency, so that they could make sure that we're okay.
Yeah, this day, he can't do it, for the Fourth of July, he cannot do it, that would be our responsibility to me and that. And when I talked to him, um, the other day, it's not even an option anymore, cause all of those things are gone, they're already operated other places. So, we would have to go somewhere else to rent them, and other places are more expensive than he is, so. Um, I just kind of figured the bounce houses for the Fourth of July are out unless, you know, he wanted to, I mean, we would definitely make up for that money whenever we get to pay on the Fourth of July with all the people that are out here. Um, but that would be, I don't know, you know, with like Journeys has, um, and, um.
Did you inquire on his stuff, how much it was?
Journeys, I had a, I have a list, it was just, it was maybe about twenty dollars more than Jim's stuff, it wasn't much more, you know, but, I don't know if, um, if they operate it, but it might be another issue where we, they just deliver it, you know, and then we're responsible for, it didn't sound like Journeys gave us the full package like Jumpers Wild did. But if you wanted me to, I could check on it more and see like, if you needed to drive that route for, and more activities out there for the Fourth and.
I think it's.
Well, and the, what you're gonna have, what we're gonna have to deal with is, we gotta make sure if somebody, we can have the volunteer to do it.
Yeah, that's the other issue we have, cause it's gonna be a busy thing for all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, council does do the car parking, and they do the tickets during the day and everything, everybody has take your turn, but, um, if we wear ourselves too thin, I don't, I mean, I don't know, it's up to you guys, but we do have to make.
Michael's only got six lifter, she's gonna need all of them.
She'll need all them where she's at, so.
Joe Warland said he's worked with those guys before, but he didn't see, it'd be a little problem.
What, Journeys?
No.
Or with Jumpers Wild? Oh, okay. Well, if you want it, then, I mean, I'm not filling it out, I don't work here, so, somebody else can fill it out and send it back in and get the, the sign signature on there, so, um.
But he's definitely handling it.
Yes, that day.
Twenty-fourth, is it?
Yes, that day he was available to do it.
Yeah, me.
For Memorial Day weekend.
So, we just gotta get volunteers lined up, if we, if we just, if he, if he want it, and that, I mean, we gotta just make sure we got the manpower to do it.
Well, for, for the twenty-fourth, he's manning it on twenty-fourth.
Oh, okay, you're right.
And then, then people just have to buy tickets at like the concession stand, that way, they're the only ones, cause since they're.
So, so we pay him.
Two hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Two hundred and fifty bucks, and then we get the income off of whatever tickets we sell.
Right.
And there's also graduation weekend. Is it right?
So, graduation party's up during the month.
Graduation on Saturday or something.
Yes, Steve, we'll see either.
Or Friday, or Friday, but Saturday.
Yeah, twenty-third, twenty-third, the.
There's people, there's probably people gonna be out there for a graduation party, so.
Yeah, I know Steve's.
Who you wanna look?
He's got one, he's showing off his.
Is there an age limit on?
I'll be intoxicated.
Yes.
Yeah, Trish said, well, nobody buys it.
Cap popping.
None of that stuff?
I'm on a beer Saturday.
Like beer, right?
Of course.
Draft, right?
So, what do you guys think?
Well, I think so.
Oh, I think, I think so.
Personally, since he's around.
Okay, well, we'll have them, we gotta make a motion or something to do that then, I guess, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, with the old shoe down.
Yep.
And then we'll let poor Angela fall sheet on, yes.
Let Angela do it, yeah.
Second if I.
I'll second it.
And it's the same price with him, right, isn't it?
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joyce, yeah, Stan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And then the next thing is, is that, um, Clashing Black, who is Rich Benner's, um, son's band from Vetsville, I do believe. Um, they have agreed to play on the fourth of July before our fireworks, and we don't have to pay them, they've gotten sponsorship. So, we can have a band for that, right?
Probably ought to attribute that, set up and say, we'll do that as well, right?
Just twin boys.
Is it? I, I don't know. Like the Nelson brothers, they blonde here, but long here.
One's got long hair, one's got short, but it's still that way.
Looks like.
You can tell them apart.
It's not gonna cost us any money, I think.
Guy, man.
Yeah, yeah, well, okay, anything.
I already wrote that on the calendar.
Yeah, okay.
But do we have to?
Okay, well, yeah, might go put it down, or can't yell at us if we don't put it down.
No, make a motion to do that then?
Yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion to September, the ban for flyboard? It's just not gonna cost us anything.
I'll second that.
That's five hundred bucks, a hundred and something.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joyce? Yeah. Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And the only other thing that I have is that, um, besides, I don't know, like the vending stuff at the concession stand, I don't know who, if you guys decide then.
John, well, John kinda takes care of it, cause he knows him for the fourth of July for who we, for the electric part.
Oh.
Well, and then, well, no, I mean, like for like concessions to open, like.
She's talking about air concession stand.
Yeah, Brittany's concession stand, which vendor we're supposed to go with, I don't know, you guys have to decide that, or is that just?
No, we can, we can handle that part.
Okay, and then, um, I just asked for the car show, um, Cam and Dave said that our best way is to go to car shows and pass these out. And Cam said, you know, you don't have to talk to anybody, she goes, just throw these in the windows of people's cars. So, um, I went out and myself, bought some colored paper, um, and I also printed off, um, these on my own computer at home. Um, I didn't print too many of them, cause the ink was getting a little expensive. So, um, if everybody would just, you know, take some, I mean, I can get some more colored paper for these guys to make copies of so that we can get it out, cause Cam said if we don't go to the car shows, then we won't have anybody here. And I can't go to car shows every weekend by myself.
You have, you have a list of?
Do you have a list of them?
I do, I printed this off from the one hundred today, so if you guys wanna make copies, and then, you know.
You guys are on the, to the car shows.
I've been, I've been to car shows a while, honestly.
Well, just stay here.
Yeah.
No, they're at them.
Yeah.
It's also, I've gotten, I put this on like the one hundred, and then there was like three other like car websites out on.
Okay.
And I've already gotten one inquiry from somebody from one of them, and then, you know.
Yeah, but we're gonna need a lot more, but I think the first show we did, we had like close to eighty.
Right.
So, we wanna make sure that we'll do a good showing, cause Ken ain't gonna work very good or whatever, he don't.
I'll hopefully, I'll get my, I'll get two of mine out there, I guess.
I've got a couple cars that doesn't work.
You can stand by one of them, you're anti.
Oh, yeah. Gary, do you wanna ask her about this before she goes?
Oh, yes. Uh, the kids' picnic tables that Steve picked up. It said on there that we, to make a check out for Tony, somebody.
Tony Albert, is who you said you'd be building for?
Tim, Tim, or is it Michael Albert?
Well, the bill came and it's, I'm supposed to pay a Sandy Messner.
That's his wife, or is.
No.
That's. Versing with Sandy and Mike. That's who we picked up.
Well, I think it needs to be approved again from the P.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
For what? Can I take my table? Second it?
I did.
We're doing a lot of that in there.
No, we're the ones in Parkville.
They're perfectly ready.
Joyce? Yeah. Steve?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
And we did, so that you know too, we did get loads delivered to our picnic tables just Monday.
Okay.
Uh, they're delivered, they got them sand, sanding down, and they're gonna seal them with the council mark seal.
And with that, I think that, you know, she does a lot of work for Bonnard Park, he's mowing out there now, I guess, and, um. Also, you know, him and Carol that do all the picnic tables, making the picnic tables and everything, and so.
Was this?
Try to thank him, seeing, making, he's done a lot of work out there for just being a volunteer, good luck for him. But we're not opposite that, so, Trish Ryan too, she's been out there with us, Rockaway Girls, doing stuff.
Yeah, they had forty-five kids on fish day.
Perfect.
Were fishing every day.
Kids had fun?
Yeah, kids had fun, passed out a lot of stuff.
Yeah. The wind was awful.
I mean, he was happy.
And she's planning on getting a list of things and doing connectivity like that every month.
Cool.
Well, she said she wanted, you know, do it every Saturday, she, she'd like to get things lined up, so she would volunteer and do it all.
Okay.
Um, so, I mean, it's, it's good, but it's something, she wants to have kids' activity all the time.
Yeah, that's good.
How many tables did you have delivered there?
Well. That was bought with, they pulled our plunge money.
I don't know what's going on that day yet, I'll ask them tomorrow.
And, and, um.
Okay.
I'm gonna read it about California that day.
And they've already picked up the three picnic tables too?
We were supposed to.
Yes, Steve picked them up last night.